Yeah.
I want to hit our mics, please.
They're already on.
All right. It is 6:00 PM and this is the Tuesday, August 20th, Lincoln City Planning Commission meeting. Please rise and join me for the Pledge of Allegiance.
Pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America, to the Republic for which it stands, one nation, for God, invisible, liberty and justice true.
Kate, could we have a roll call, please?
Sure.
Marie McFarland.
Here.
Josh Brainard.
Here.
Steve Griffiths.
Here.
Miles Lessinger.
Here.
And Patty Crowen.
Here.
Lindsay, any agenda changes or revisions?
No, I do want to provide a little information under item number 10 in regards to our vacancies, but that would be the only revision.
Okay. Okay, first up is the election of a Vice Chair for the remainder of 2019. As the Commissioners know, Sean Kerr was our Vice Chair and he has left the Planning Commission, so we need a Vice Chair to serve out the remainder of his term, which is till the end of December 2019. So, I'm just going to nominate Steve. You know, Steve has the experience and has shown in the last couple of meetings, he can step in and chair the meetings, and I would like to put your name in contention, Steve? Okay. Do we need a vote?
We would ask for any other nominations.
Okay. Are there any other nominations?
It would close nominations.
Okay, let's close the nominations, and then we can vote.
Then someone can make a motion, because at this point you only nominated him, so you'd want to say, "Motion to appoint Steve."
Okay, can I do that?
Somebody should. If you do it, it's more unanimous consent, because you're chairing the meeting.
Sure.
If someone else does it, it's a motion.
Okay. Does anybody want to make that motion?
I'll make that motion to appoint Steve to Vice Chair.
Okay.
Seconded.
And it's moved and seconded that Steve would be the Chair, the Vice Chair? I'll just give you the Chair. All right, all in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Okay, congratulations, Steve.
Thanks, Steve.
Thank you, Steve, I appreciate that. All right, we have some minutes. The regular meeting of July 16th was in your packet. I'm sure everybody had a chance to review those, so can I get a motion to approve those minutes?
Make a motion to approve the minutes of the July 20, or 30th meeting?
No, July 16th.
Thank you, 16th meeting.
Okay.
I'll second.
All right, all in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Okay, hearing none, those are approved. Then there was a special meeting of the Planning Commission, excuse me, on July 30th, and I don't want to get these confused. That was the, um, the appeal of the Planning Director's decision on Joshua and Dana Thomas appellate, um, the vacation rental dwelling land use authorization. So, do I have a motion to approve those minutes?
Move to approve.
Second.
All right, all in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Hearing none. Richard, did we need to identify that we'd read those before we voted on them, on those minutes?
Well, I think, uh, did you, you read them? I would assume if you had not read them, you would not have voted on it.
Okay, okay.
But, um...
And watched the video?
If you weren't there, you would want to indicate that you reviewed the tape.
Okay, all right. So, I did read the minutes and reviewed the video.
And we had statements earlier that that...
And Josh said he did.
I did as well.
He did as well, okay. So, I just want to make sure we're cool on that, okay. Any final orders, resolutions, or written communications? I don't see any.
None today.
All right. So, um, we have a public hearing and deliberation, and, Richard, I'm going to ask you to help me with this. I know I don't need to go over all of the notes.
Yeah, let's just summarize. Where we are is that the hearing concluded, the record was closed, it was returned to the table for deliberations. A motion failed, another motion failed. A motion passed, continued it to this meeting. So, what we asked you to do was, the members that were not present were asked to review the tape and the materials, so that you could come prepared to deliberate. So, that's where we are. Unfortunately, there, well, on the script, the first thing you would ask is any ex parte communications.
Right.
Since the last time. The law would require you also to declare any actual or potential conflicts of interest, and you could also declare bias, okay? We did have an unauthorized communication with the Planning Commission, which was on email. I emailed you all and kind of suggested you not read it, but I don't know, if someone did read it, then we have to disclose the substance and ask if anyone wants to rebut the substance. So, if any one of you read that ex parte communication, which, what was the name of the, I can't remember. Roy, Roy? The last name was Roy?
Linda, Linda Roy.
Linda Roy, okay. So, there was an email from Linda Roy, which came in after the close of the hearing and after the close of the record, and addressed you. So, if any of you read it, then we'll put it in the record and offer an opportunity for anyone that wants to rebut the statements. Now, in substance, there wasn't a lot. Did any of you just, did everyone just ignore it, or?
I, I have to admit, I didn't even open my computer since I've gone back.
Okay, so you did not receive ex parte.
I didn't see yours or the, or the actual message.
I was trying to get you guys not to read it.
I received Richard's and didn't read the other communication if I read Richard's, so...
So, did anybody actually read it?
I didn't open it, I didn't...
We're all pretty clueless up here, Richard.
Then, due to your...
I read yours first, it seemed, it seemed more, more important.
Due to your extreme fear of electronic communication, appears you have not received any ex parte communications, and so we'll just state for the record that that communication from Ms. Roy was not in the record, was not reviewed, and is not in the record, so we don't have to offer an opportunity for anybody to rebut her statements.
Okay.
So, that's, that's done now.
We still need to ask if there's any additional ex parte communication?
Yes, anything else? Anybody else?
Okay, any, anyone else? Steve?
Yeah, um, since our last meeting, I was approached by a citizen who in substance advised me that Commissioner McFarland had encouraged him to attend the July 30th Planning Commission meeting to hear the two VRD-related appeals. I entered the conversation quickly, because this matter is still in process, as we know. I am not biased or prejudiced by this contact, and as I recall, Commissioner McFarland declared her possible bias at the last meeting, but then made a very affirmative statement of impartiality.
So, and, and you're not required to repeat that, but you did declare that you would be impartial and base your decision on the evidence and the code in effect. So, with those things out of the way, then it comes back to you to deliberate. I guess I'd ask that, just to affirm, the two Commissioners who were not present did review the entire record.
Yes.
And, and the, and the tape, so you can ask me or Lindsay questions about things that are in the record to aid in your deliberations. I'll just tell you that we have essentially a, oh, let's just be clear. This is an appeal, where the allegation is staffed it and make the correct decision. This is not a request for a variance. You do not have a variance before you. To grant a variance would be an unauthorized act, so don't attempt to grant a variance. It's not, not before you. The other thing that's not before you is, you have no jurisdiction to grant permission for people to use the city right-of-way. The City Council controls the right-of-way, and in fact, has delegated to the City Manager certain authority to control the right-of-way. You, however, have no such authority, so you're not going, you're not in, you don't have the power to grant licenses or any permission to use city right-of-way. So, that brings us to, the question before you is, did the Planning Director make the correct decision in determining that this VRD had to be restricted to two bedrooms, because they do not have more than two parking spaces that meet the definition of parking spaces per the code?
Right. And it's, it's also not on the table for us to, to opine on whether or not we agree or disagree with that ordinance. We're simply looking at whether or not the Planning Department appropriately applied the statutes and the ordinance that's in, on the books right now.
The, while certainly someone could propose an amendment to the code to make the standard parking spot that which would accommodate a Fiat, um, you know, that, that's not before you. So, the only thing before you is applying the facts in the record to the applicable law, the applicable law being parking spaces defined as, I can't remember the dimensions, but they're very clear.
Right.
And you're only allowed half the number of subcompact or whatever.
Right, 50%. And, and we're not, I mean, obviously, we're also not debating the reasonableness of tying a car to a bedroom. That's just, that's the way it's written, and that's the way we, yeah, okay.
And I guess one other distinction that was made during the hearing is that sometimes residents in the city have people come visit them, and sometimes they park in the right-of-way. And then sometimes they, they're parked legally, sometimes they're not. That's not the issue. This is not about visitors coming, this is about the standard for approval of a, of a vacation rental.
Okay. All right, so I would ask the Commissioners then if they have any further questions for Richard or for planning staff. Does anybody have any other questions? I, I have a couple of them, and, and one of them is just simply a consistency in the record, and I don't know if it makes a whole lot of difference, but there are a couple of places where it's described, the two off-street parking spaces on the property, one compact in the driveway, and one full-size in front of the garage parked parallel. It's not really in the driveway, it's in the garage, right? So, do we need to clean that up, that language, so that it's...
Yeah, I think we should correct, correctly reflect ones in the garage.
Can I just quickly give you those corrections? Okay, so...
Take in reference of...
Yep, I sure can. So, the first one is, um, it's on packet page 16, and it's the second paragraph under city decision. Three lines down, the line starts "property as shown in Exhibit 5," one compact in the, and it says driveway, it should say garage. Another correction on packet page 17, the last paragraph on the page, "As per the above code, only two legal parking," it should say "spaces" instead of "spaced."
Yeah.
All right. I know these are just kind of nitpicking, but that's where I am. There was one, oh, another one, um, under background, this is packet page 29, it's the same issue, the compact in the garage versus driveway, so it's the second paragraph under background, the third line, "compact in the garage." And then, I, I have a, a question. On, on packet page 30, under residential zones and the VR zone, it, it says, blah, 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 it's talking about landscaping. "For oceanfront properties constrained by a need to be set back from the bluff edge due to geological hazards, landscaping may be reduced in order to accommodate required parking." Can you explain that to me?
The owner must, a minimum of 50%.
Isn't that lot on the bluff? I'm, I'm just wondering if it fits that. Do you see where I'm looking? I'm on packet page 30.
Paragraph five.
Paragraph five, it's residential zones and the VR zone.
Okay, let me pull up 1750 to 100.
Okay. It's talking about the minimum landscaping, but then there's a, an odd sentence that suggests it may not need 50% if it's constrained by the bluff.
Well, if they didn't, if they didn't request that, if, I don't know if this is a situation where that might apply, but if it wasn't requested, then the Planning Director didn't exercise the authority to make that reduction.
Okay, but i- is that something on the VRD application form that...
Well, not everything can make it on the application form. I mean, the standards of the code are the standards of the code, and, you know, I'm not sure what, how you're going to decide this, but, you know, if you get an approval and you don't agree, you can appeal, but you can also ask to amend your approval after making changes, so...
Okay, all right, that's, that's really what I was just wondering if there was any wiggle room. The other, um, the other point is on, under conclusion on packet page 31, the, it, it doesn't mention the single-family residence R15RE, which is the zone that this is actually in, correct? It says, "The, the subject residence conforms to all land use regulations as given in the municipal code, blah, blah, blah." Single-family residential R15, but it's really R15RE, isn't it?
Which page are you on, Patty?
I'm on the bottom of pa, of packet page 31, in conclusion.
Yeah, you're correct, it should be Rhodes End, single-family, the same, but...
All right. So, really, just that question of the bluff and what that means was, was the only question that I had.
Aye.
Any other questions for the, on this? Okay. We'll entertain a motion.
I guess I would say that that talks about constraints based on the bluff edge, it doesn't, it's not talking about parking.
And, and that's where I'm not sure that this home has, is on a bluff edge, that's where I would need to check. I've got the code open right now, so...
Yeah, I mean, you know, I, I only bring it up because I found it curious, and it didn't give me enough information to know whether or not that would be applicable to this. I don't know if that constraint was in effect when this house was built, if they needed to set back additionally from the bluff, which would have shortened that available parking on the other side.
Well...
Fortunately, the staff report doesn't wrap.
That was fun.
Might take a minute for our mics to get back up. Okay, I've got our mics back on.
So, if, if, I think what's applicable here is that we don't have any evidence in the record about whether or not we need to, we could reduce landscaping in order to increase parking.
Okay.
Again, the applicant could address that at a different time, but it's not in the record of this decision.
Okay, all right. Okay. All right. We'll entertain a motion. Does anyone have a motion?
I move to deny the appeal.
I second it.
Right, there's a motion to deny the appeal and to second it. Can we have a roll call vote? Okay. Lessinger?
Aye.
McFarland?
Aye.
Griffiths?
Aye.
Brainard?
Aye.
And Crowen?
Aye.
Motion carries. Okay. So, we will get a final for this at our next meeting, perhaps? Is that...
Yes.
Let me go from here.
Yeah, we'll bring back a final order for approval, so we know your tentative oral decision, you'll get a final written decision.
Okay. All right, thank you. Okay. Design review standards.
So, this evening, staff is requesting that the Planning Commission continue the public hearing on the design review standards to our next public hearing date, which would be our September 3rd regular scheduled meeting. This is due to additional items that have been identified under, through final review that need to be addressed and cleaned up with the other sections of our codes. We're just not ready for a final ordinance at this point for the public hearing, and would request that the Commission consider a continuance.
Okay, so, it needs to be re-noticed?
No, if we continue the public hearing from this evening and set a date specific, then another notice would not be mandated.
And you're proposing September 3rd?
Correct.
All right. Do we need a motion to do that? Okay, can I have a motion?
I move that we postpone the design re, request a continuing hearing to September the 3rd.
I'll second.
All right, that's for ZOA 2019-08. All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? All right, that's continued. Next?
Next is CPA 2019-2, the North Lincoln City Mixed Use. Again, this initiated Comp Plan Text and Map Amendment, was tentatively scheduled for August 6th, public hearing. Due to quorum issues, we had to continue to this evening. Due to workload issues, staff is requesting a continuation to September 3rd to provide additional time for the final draft language and consideration for the Planning Commission.
Okay, and this isn't bumping into anything that's associated with the, the land formerly known as the villages, is it?
As, as far as timeline issues, no.
Right, okay.
No.
Okay. So, I need a motion to continue the hearing for the North Lincoln City Mixed Use. One of you...
I move, we request a continuing hearing for CPA 2019-02, North Lincoln City Mixed Usage to September 3rd, 2019.
September 3rd, we're doing that, ooh, it's going to be a busy night.
Second.
All right, all in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Okay. Statutory development agreements.
Yes, so this one we are not bumping, we will hold the public hearing on this this evening.
Boo too.
Okay, it is now 6:24. The public hearing for file APP 2019-03 is now open. This is a quasi-judicial land use hearing for an appeal of an, no, that's wrong. Starting over. All right, this is for file ZOA 2019-07. This public hearing concerns a city-initiated proposal to Title 17 zoning, to add a new chapter 17.96, development agreements. The amendment provides the outright use of statutory development agreements with the opportunity to phase development, extend land use approvals up to a 15-year maximum, and allow modifications and deviations from specific land use development requirements for properties within designated Pearls and North Lincoln City. It requires two public hearings in front of City Council if modifications and/or deviations from specific land use development requirements are requested. The Planning Commission's role in the legislative process is to consider any written or oral comments or testimony, as well as information from staff, and present a recommendation to the City Council, who will hold an additional public hearing. The City Council may adopt the Planning Commission recommendation or may take other action. All right, so we're going to take a few moments to cover some preliminary matters and required statements. Does any member of the Commission wish to declare a conflict of interest in this matter? Seeing none. The substantive criteria that apply to this hearing include the statewide planning goals, the city's comprehensive plan, and the applicable provisions of the city's zoning ordinance. Comments and testimony should be directed to these criteria or to other criteria that you believe apply to the subject of the hearing. Before the staff presents a report, I'll summarize the adopted public hearing procedures. The staff will present a report and respond to any questions. After that, any person may speak for up to three minutes. If your testimony includes questions, please direct them to me as the Chair. We won't interrupt your testimony to answer questions, we may direct your questions to staff following your testimony, and if the Planning Commission has questions, your time responding to any questions will not be counted in your time limit. If you wish to speak, please write your name and mailing address clearly on the sign-up list at the entrance. Please speak directly into the microphone and begin by stating your name only. If you also have written testimonies to submit into the record, please provide a copy of that to our recorder, Kate. Will the staff please present their reports?
Yes. So, the proposed ordinance this evening establishes procedures and requirements for consideration of development agreements. The ordinance tracks the statute and authorizes adoption of a model agreement by, via resolution. Development agreements are specifically authorized under the ORS and are a negotiated process. That is, they're not quasi-judicial by right land use matters. They provide a mechanism for developers to secure the requirements of the developments, such as vesting of regulations, for up to a timeframe of 15 years, which exceeds the timeframe guaranteed by statutory right for development. And they also, as proposed, permitted, if approved by the municipal code or comprehensive plan, opportunities to adjust uses, minimum, maximum densities, gross floor area, or structure height allowed within the underlying zoning district. The city also can obtain benefits through the use of a development agreement that go beyond the nexus of Nolan and Dolan case law, that the impact of the development shall, the, the public benefit shall not exceed the impact of the development. And through development agreements, we can greater negotiate other opportunities for public improvements that do not have to meet the, the land use nexus case laws. In addition, so, in the ordinance that you received tonight, there's highlighted text, and there's also shown strike-through, this is how the city's legal team and I worked together to propose changes. And so, in the initial draft, there was a proposal to require two public hearings in front of the City Council, should deviations or alterations from the prescriptive zoning standards be requested by the developer. Our legal team is requesting that we remove that standard of two public hearings, it is not a requirement under ORS to have those additional public process. Let's see here. "Any requests for deviations must be consistent with the comprehensive plan's land use designations of the property, and they must be expressly authorized by code." The city is processing currently a comprehensive plan land use amendment, known as the North Lincoln City Text and Map Amendment, that would, under draft proposal, authorize development agreements to include modifications of code requirements in... agreements to include modifications of code requirements in certain instances. There are also some new zoning districts that will follow after we look at the land use map amendments to implement those designations that could authorize modifications to the standards if that is identified through the public process in the adoption of those zoning codes. I do want to be clear that tonight's ordinance does not authorize deviations or standards to development agreements at that time. We will need to follow up with zoning code amendments, as well as potential comp plan amendments if there are specific areas of town that we want to allow this flexibility for greater economic growth, or economic redevelopment as well. So, included in the staff report is a summary of ORS 94, or the full text of ORS 94504, which allows the effect of development agreements, what contents and the time limits that are vested for those. In addition, we also have information on the requirements to have findings and an adoption. This is, development agreements under this draft ordinance, unless associated with a quasi judicial plan that would be coming in front of this Planning Commission, would be heard and negotiated through the council legislative process. Let's see here. So, with that, there is additional summaries of what state law requires and allows for development agreements in the staff report. Without reading all of that, staff would be happy to answer any questions, recommend the Planning Commission open the public hearing, consider any testimony on that ordinance, and then close, if desired, close the public hearing and begin deliberation.
Thank you.
Could I just add? Probably, one of the key things a developer gets if he enters into a development agreement is a 15, up to a 15-year timetable. This is important to a developer because, you know, our code generally has much shorter timeframes between when you get a final or a preliminary approval and a final. It's generally like two years. So, this gives a developer certain vesting, the ability to get an approval under one set of regulations and count on the regulations not changing during the term of the development. There are exceptions to that, okay? In, there's a section in here about unilateral amendment. Well, we reserve that to ourselves because we do not want to be accused of contracting away the police power. So, you can vest somebody for a period of time, but we have to have the ability to, if new legislation is adopted, to apply that new legislation, especially when it's contemplated. Let's say we're going through the process of updating our system development charges, and there's a development coming in, and we tell them, you know, as part of the development approval, "Look, we're in the process right now of approving new charges. They're gonna apply to you." And so, we can specify that in development agreement. And by that way, we can have newly adopted regulations apply to the development. That's just an example. They were contemplated at the time of the approval. Another might be, if it was an overriding health and safety concern, we discover that you can't build on this kind of soil, and so, we have to do something to keep people from building on this dangerous soil or whatever. So, we would have, there's a process for that. It's not to be used lightly, but it reserves really our legislative power, and it makes the agreement more defensible. Same, by the same token, there's a provision in here that says, "If we agree to build something to facilitate a development, it's subject to our local budget process." That's kind of like a disclaimer. Yes, yeah, well, we can agree to do it, but if the money isn't appropriated through the local budget process, we can't bind future budget committees to do that. So, that's in there. The, the benefit of, for the city of a development agreement, as Lindsay alluded to, is that we can ask for things that don't bear necessarily the rational nexus that Nolan, the Nolan case requires, or the rough proportionality that the Dolan case requires. As you know, those cases were about developments, going through the development process, and governments were asking for things. So, in Nolan, something that didn't bear a rational relationship to the development, and in Dolan, something that was not roughly proportional to the impact of the development. In Dolan, it was, it was, you know, you're asking me to build too much sidewalk and to dedicate this pedestrian path, and that all is way out of proportion to my little expansion of my plumbing business. Nolan was, gosh, it was a California or coastal commission case, North Carolina or something like that. Anyway, and they, they wanted some kind of pedestrian access through the property, which didn't bear relationship to what they were requesting. They wanted some kind of variance or something, but to ask for something over here that had nothing to do with what you wanted approval for over here, had no relationship. So, the court said, "You can't do that." But when you have a negotiated agreement, you can ask for things that are outside of those parameters. So, we could say, "Well, we'd love to approve your annexation and your new project, but you gotta build us a park over here." And that may not be something we could require as part of a quasi judicial proceeding, but as part of a negotiated agreement, we could, we could ask for it. Can't ask for illegal things, but
Right.
You know, something that's, that in this case would be an amenity or a dedication or something that may not fit those legal tests, but may be desirable for the public.
So, if I'm understanding correctly, though, that, I mean, the developer gets a certain degree of, or a certain level of certainty of what's going to be required of them, however, if the laws change, if the codes change, if something else changes that, that could be applied to them, is it always applied to them?
No.
Or can a development agreement exclude certain things? For example, if we changed, if we changed our tree ordinance to require more vegetation in areas, and they've already put together their plan and identified a certain percentage of vegetation they're going to put in.
They would, they would likely be protected or vested from the new regulations. It's the kind of same idea as like non-conforming uses, except non-conforming uses are typically finished and constructed. Vested development is in process, it's not yet finished.
Who participates in the negotiation?
Not you.
Yeah.
And I
And I don't like this.
This is not, and I just want to be clear, the role, I was gonna get to this, the role of the Planning Commission is to make sure that where, that this application will have a mixed character. It will appear in some respects to be quasi judicial, and you'll be doing what you normally do in a quasi judicial process, where you'll be looking at, "Well, the code doesn't allow us to waive this, so let's see if the facts in the record, applied to the law, equal compliance or non-compliance." You're used to doing that in the quasi judicial context. So, part of a review of a development agreement will be doing that. You know, there's no variance or modification of this street standard, and this is, this road is this wide, the standard is this, that equals compliance or non-compliance. The second part of this is, you know, where staff may have negotiated a modification or an allowance, and then your role there is not to say, "Oh, wait a minute, I, I could make us a better deal."
Right.
You know? Your role is to say, "Okay, staff has modified the setback. Is there a legal authority in the code for that modification, or does the staff just make it up?" So, you are holding the rest of the city's staff accountable to make sure that the quasi judicial things, we must meet, are met. Any modification has legal authority. So, that's your review role, and the council will be counting on you to recommend, you're looking at it hard to say, "These modifications are authorized, these quasi judicial requirements have been met." And then it goes to the council, and if the council says, "You know what? We decide not to take this legislative act," because ultimately, a development agreement is a legislative act, it's negotiated, then there's no appeal from a legislative act. But you don't get to basically, unless you become a city councillor, you don't get to decide the ultimate question. Your role, as you do most of the time, is to, is to apply the facts to the law, and in this case, to look at modifications to make sure that they're legally defensible and justified.
Wait, 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 wait. So, now I know we don't participate in the negotiations. Who does? Who's negotiating these?
Generally, it would be between staff and, either planning, planning staff and the legal department as we work through the process. There might be times where an applicant, say, for a land use designation comes in, and they want to up-designate their property, however, they say, "Well, it's only for this specific use." At that point in time, staff could say, "Well, I would recommend you apply for a development agreement that limits your future up-zone to that specific use if you want this to potentially get through." So, there's, there's opportunities, whereas maybe it would have been a condition previously, you could put it in as, as the development agreement. We, we can approve this based upon the findings that were limiting it to, you know, only a small amount of retail, instead of the full site being massive retail or something. Development agreements can also constrict the allowances of the zoning code.
Okay. If a development agreement involves a nexus to urban renewal, would they be involved in the negotiation?
I think it's generally a staff endeavor, and so, planning staff, legal staff. In the past, that's been who was involved. And staff, to a certain extent, does the very same thing you will be doing, looking at whether or not those things that must be met are met, looking to see if the things where they've asked for variances or modifications, whether or not those variances or modifications are legally authorized. So, we'll be doing that, you'll be checking it.
The other thing is, if there's aspects that they're requesting modifications for from, say, public works standards, or something along those lines, we would involve the, the leadership of those departments as well.
Okay. Okay. And there's no public involvement in this
Well
Until it's a public hearing in front of the council?
Yeah.
Essentially.
That's, that's the process. The public process is public hearings to approve the proposed agreement.
Okay. Steve?
There's only one public hearing to approve the proposed agreement, and that comes before the city council?
Well
Under this draft?
Yeah.
Under the proposed
Well, if there's, if, if it comes before you, we're gonna have a public hearing, we're gonna advertise it in the same way that we noticed the city council meeting. The only way we would do, not do two public hearings, one before you and one before the council, would be as if there was no development application tied to the, the development agreement. So, if they just came in with a development agreement, and they did not have any kind of an application with it, then it would just go to the governing body for hearing, wouldn't necessarily have to come to you.
Okay.
What about modifications down the line?
Well, a, a well-crafted development agreement will specify what is a major modification, what is a minor modification, and what needs to go through additional process. You don't, you don't want to have to go back through the public hearing process for minor tweaks, but that's like, like the difference between saying, "The uses permitted are the following. We can build 46 condos, or 53 townhomes, or 76 single-family homes." And that agreement provides for that flexibility, so you don't have to keep running back here for modifications or tweaks. Now, if you just nailed everything down, you might have to come back, which, you know, you learn that lesson fairly quickly, that you don't want to spend money and time
Right.
Going through that process.
Okay. Marie?
Is this for all new development going forward, or does it include something like the villages? Does the contracts maybe that we already either negotiated something?
Well, the, the villages is, is, this isn't the villages, this is a tool in your toolbox, okay? So, that's what this is. If, if you wanted to come in and buy some property down in Nelscott, and then propose an annexation, and you wanted to make sure that you got approved, so you said, "I'm gonna do this much workforce housing, because you know, we have a need for that." You know, if you came in and you asked for just housing and didn't tie it to workforce housing, we'd probably say, "You know what? We got enough housing. We don't need to add more property to our city. No, thank you." Deny the annexation. So, it, it provides a mechanism for, as Lindsay was saying, tie down or restrict a proposal, and it's binding, so it can help somebody get past a public facility constraint, or in the case of housing, show that they can meet a need. So, it's, it's a useful tool in your toolbox.
It's a tool that starts now and goes forward?
Yes, except that, that we don't actually need an ordinance. We've already had development agreements processed, and, you know, one went to Council Logan Park, I think. I don't know if you guys were given that, I think we gave you one from Ashland. But we've, you can use it without an ordinance. An ordinance just gives a little bit more clarity as to what this thing is about, as opposed to, "Well, we did one for Logan Park a couple of years back, go look at the packet." No, here's what it is in the code, it tells you this is what's gonna be in the agreement.
This memorializes it.
Specifically, how Lincoln City wants to be able to use the tool. Another thing then, and follow up on Marie's question, is that this could be used for redevelopment purposes as well, but, but generally, new projects that would be coming in, whether redevelopment, greenfield development, brown, brownfield development.
One of the comments we had today was that our, we haven't been really precise enough about where you can use it. So, we will modify this language to say, "This development agreement can be used in the following zoning districts and to implement the following land use designation." So, that there's, we had some questions today about, we're not being clear enough about where you can use it. And, and one of the things that's mentioned is, you can use this to facilitate an annexation, so we'll have to mention, you know
Citywide for annexations or
Yeah, I thought it did have language in it that it's either within the city or in the urban growth boundary.
We did have that, and, but we had some questions on it today, so apparently, it's not clear enough. So, we'll try to clear that up.
Okay. Steve? Yep.
When does the trigger start on the 15-year timing? Is that at the city council approval of the agreement?
Yeah. The, a development agreement has to be approved by ordinance, so the 15 years basically be after the effective date of the ordinance.
And could you repeat to me again the rationale for the 15 years? To me, that seems like an extraordinary period of time, it's almost a whole generation. And community values change, communities change in five years, and I was wondering, is 15 years too long?
Well, again, it's a negoti, the maximum period of time allowed is 15 years. There are ways to reopen an agreement, there are provisions about, you know, some things will be vested, other things will not be. You know, when you come in, the building code in effect at the time will be the, what applies to your property. You don't get to set aside the 1988 building code and say, "I'm gonna build accordance with this." You know, so there, there are some things that just will not be vested.
Including environmental regulations.
Certain, certain things like that will, and will have some clarity in the agreement. There's a statute in Oregon that says, "Certain standards can't be applied once you get your final plot approved." New standards, you can't change the standards, so you can't, you know, come along, get it final plot approved, and then go say, "Oh, no, sorry, everybody with an approved lot has to have this changed." So, there are already some, certain statutory vesting in the statutes that protect you, but we would reference those in the development agreement, and as well as the exceptions. Is 15 years too long? Well, 15 years is not guaranteed. I mean, this is not quasi judicial, so you don't come in and say, "Here's my application, I get a 15-year agreement." No. No.
Negotiated.
Yeah, it's negotiated, and it's what's reasonable. And if it's like, "Here's our proposal, and we're gonna build all this," you know, maybe you need 15 years. But if it's a small project, maybe it's only a five-year agreement.
Would there be any potential for applying what, what are these things, development agreements, to any areas in any of the Pearls, for example? Can you think of an example where one might be used?
You know, I haven't had a lot of instances to use development agreement, development agreements for redevelopment. I imagine there's a possibility, if codes are, you know, changed favorably, that people I imagine there's a possibility, if codes are, you know, changed favorably, that people would make, it would be economically feasible. But most of the time, it's for annexations or large properties under unified control that meet, want to develop in a logical pattern. So I think it's more useful for larger projects. I have, I have used them on, to resolve, you know, small subdivision disputes. I think I gave the example on one of our work sessions of allowance to vary the wetland buffer. Remember, I think I said, "We've got a 50-foot wetland buffer in our code. It's 50 feet. It's 50 feet all the time unless you use a development agreement, and then it would be an average 50 feet." So you can make it bigger in one spot and narrower in the other. The other time, I think we had a vested rights, kind of a, it was, it was a dispute. So there was someone that wanted to claim that they had a right to build something under a prior approval, and so we used a development agreement to negotiate something. So that was already a prior case. Rather than go into litigation, it was kind of used as a settlement vehicle.
And, and the development agreement is not a vehicle that would be used if you had multiple distinct ownership, correct? It all has to be, all of the area in question has to be under a single entity ownership and control?
Well, there's exceptions. I mean, what we want is unified control of the development. Sometimes you have judicial proceedings for closures that judicially divvy up parcels, so you either need a unified control, or you need agreement of the parties.
And if I may, it's my understanding that development agreements are, can be sold and transferred with the land as well. So they go with the land, not the applicant.
Okay. But you wouldn't, you wouldn't use this particular tool of the toolbox if you were trying to do some sort of regional development that would include numerous owners that would have to get together?
Yeah.
It gets too messy to do that?
It's not like trying to rezone, you know, 35 lots to the VR zone or something. It's not like a citywide or area-wide thing. It's more like there, like the villages, you know, if the city wanted to take its property and sell half of it to somebody, then we could use, use that vehicle to, you know, have them grant, get an approval, as opposed to, you know, have them go through an amendment process for the master plan or something like that. But I, there's any number of ways it can be used, but it's best used when you have a larger project with unified control.
Okay.
Typically, multiple phases.
So the property formerly known as the villages is owned by the city. Can the city negotiate a development agreement with themselves?
With ourselves, yeah. I guess that would be, I think we can get ourselves a sweet deal.
[laughing]
Now, we, well...
Wait till you come before us.
Yeah, till you come here.
No, we wouldn't negotiate an agreement with ourselves, but if we had interested parties that wanted to purchase a phase or portion of the project, depending on whether or not it was the existing project or a changed project, yeah, development agreements could be used for a large piece of property. The villages is not owned completely by the city, by the way. There's, there are several other owners.
Pockets, yeah.
Not, in addition to the Maplewood subdivision with people, there's other, Marge Boyd owns a pretty large piece, or some group in Florida owns a piece, and then the city's pretty much the remainder.
Okay. But those, for example, then, those owners could get together and establish some sort of unified ownership situation to come to the city for a development agreement?
Yeah. Yeah. I think you'll see development agreements in the context of annexation, probably before you see anything else.
Right.
Because I think the ability to limit uses or promise something that we need has a real appeal and real utility.
Mm-hmm. Okay. Lindsay, there's some, some typos and things in this analysis. Do you care about that? Or do, I mean, not that you don't care, but do you want to spend any time doing that?
Commissioner Griffiths pointed out there is, on Section 2, some leftover words from some previous sentences and a comma that shouldn't be there. That would be on the third full paragraph in the first, in the, in the first sentence.
What page?
Yeah, packet page 54.
If you've spotted things and you send it to us, we can refine it for the next step in the process.
Okay, yeah. I can do that, because there's, yeah, there's some inconsistencies. Tell me why some of these words are highlighted. I'm trying, I'm struggling to figure out why.
Because the, if you look at the footer, the legal department got in at the request of the planning director, because she said, "Hey, you haven't updated this since we made it certain change." So, so I got in and I just said, "You know what? Here, the, the yellow is things I tweaked since we sent this off to DLCD." So I added a couple of words here, added a couple.
So the yellow, the yellow are words that have been added?
Yeah, added or changed since it went off to DLCD. I was just trying to point out. I wasn't trying to hide that I had tweaked it.
Okay.
That's why I changed the footer.
Okay.
And I left the highlighting in when I approved it.
I'm glad it wasn't something I just couldn't quite figure out. The only other question, I think, that I have is, I understand that this is sort of a general description of guidelines that would be used for a developer to help them maneuver through developing a development agreement and sort of what the city's expecting. So I was kind of surprised to come across this paragraph about North Lincoln City Mixed Use FLUM, and I'm wondering why it's there. Is that appropriate language to specify a certain thing?
That goes, that goes back to the, what I said earlier, is that we need to say where you can use a development agreement. And one of those decisions was, "Okay, Pearls, we should be able to use it in the Pearls. Where else can we use it?" Well, this future land use map change that we're making
Right.
to the villages, that, that area should be able to use development agreements. So we're using two things, zoning districts and future land use map designations to say where development agreements can be used.
Okay.
And what we, we had the confusion earlier today was, you just need to be clear about where can you use the development agreement? You can use a development agreement in the following zones. And then if future land use map designations are kind of above the zones or underneath the zones, I guess, and so there will be zones to implement the North Lincoln Land Use Map designation.
Right.
But we just have the names of them to put down there, so we just said, "The zoning districts that implement that."
Okay. So does that exclude every place else within the city, then?
Until we bring...
If you identify certain places, but you don't list...
Until we do a major comprehensive plan update and look at all of our land use designations as we go through some of those changes in the process, I think that would be the appropriate time to add them to other parts of town and consider that. At this point in time, the way that the ordinance is drafted, it would just be that land use designation and then any zones within the Pearls or within the black boundary of a Pearl.
It's possible the council will say, "We want to be able to use this more broadly." Or, we actually had that comment today, you know, "We need to be broader in where we can do this." At least until Lindsay's comprehensive plan revision is done, and then we can maybe refine it. So we were having, we were conservative in saying, "Only these places." We're getting questions about, "Shouldn't it be broader?" We're going to end up landing somewhere in the middle.
Okay. So would a development agreement be used in an urban renewal district?
The Pearls are located in urban renewal districts.
But there's an additional urban renewal district that's being contemplated.
Correct.
And it doesn't fall into the Pearls or the North Lincoln City Mixed Use?
The, the... It's not related to, I mean, urban renewal districts are not contingent on development agreements. Development agreements aren't contingent on urban renewal districts.
Okay. But would, would there be any advantage to a developer wishing to utilize a development agreement within an urban renewal district?
If, if the developer is trying to get the urban renewal agency to build certain improvements to, you know, increase capacity or whatever, to facilitate the development.
Workforce housing.
Yeah. I think what is more likely is that you're going to see this restricted by zoning district. I think it's going to say, "You can do a development agreement in the following zones."
Okay.
And probably be excluding the typical single-family residential type thing and leaning toward more comprehensive.
Commercial mixed-use neighborhood centers.
Okay. And I, I lied. I did have one more question. Sorry. And you may have said it earlier, and I just missed it. Why, what's the rationale between or behind removing the language requiring a minimum of two public hearings on the agreement?
I proposed it. He disagrees.
I think, it's just, it's just that I'm used to one hearing before the planning commission, one hearing before the council. Planning commission has a role.
Right.
Help us make the findings of consistency with the regulations. Help us make a finding that these modifications were authorized. You go to the council, "Here's the planning commission's recommendation. Council, what, what do you want to do?" Public hearing's over. Now we've got to adopt an ordinance, which requires two readings, so it just adds another, another meeting, you know, another public hearing. It's not required by the statute to have two hearings before the city council. And to a certain extent, development agreements, by definition, contemplate modifications or variances, so it's almost like we'll always be having two public hearings, because somebody's not going to come in with a development agreement and say, "What do you want?" Nothing. They're not going to say that.
We're good.
So we'll always be doing some kind of a modification.
Okay. I think I understand that. Other questions? No? Okay. Now's the time for public comment. Does anybody want to speak?
Please try to control yourself, the crowd.
Yeah, I know. I know. This is riveting information.
One at a time.
Hoping.
All right. I'm not, I'm not seeing anybody that wants to talk. I don't see any representative. I do see a representative of publication, you don't, you don't want to, no, okay. If there's no further comment, is there a motion to close the public hearing business type and the record?
Some moved.
Second.
All right. All in favor of closing the public hearing and the record?
Aye.
Any opposed? Okay. What's the pleasure of the commission? Don't all talk at once. All right. I, I'll just, I'll just start by saying, I, like I mentioned, I have a couple of edits that I think just need to be, some clarifications that need to be done, so, and I assume that you can do that without us having to review it again. So I would just like to have the opportunity to provide you with those, those edits. Anything else? All right. Is there a motion to forward a recommendation to the city council?
Some moved.
All right, all right. So you're moving to forward...
Forward this, do you want me to mention the number?
I think so, yeah. Please?
BOA 2019-7 to the city council for consideration.
Second. Approved.
Recommend approval or not recommend?
You want to approve this to send?
Yes.
Yeah, with the edits.
Second.
Okay.
With the edits.
All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Okay. So you'll put together a final recommendation. We'll vote on it in our next meeting, correct?
We, we could add it late to the council packet. I believe it's scheduled for September 9th in front of the city council, so...
It, it says the city council will hold a public hearing on this matter on September 23rd.
Twenty, okay, then we have plenty of time.
So, all right. So we'll see it one more time for final, correct?
Yes, on, at September 3rd's meeting.
Okay. All right. Thank you.
Okay.
Any old business?
Old business? No, no active old business tonight.
Okay. Any new business?
No new business this evening beyond the item number six of the agenda.
Which we just did, so we're good. Any planning commission training?
I wanted to check and see if Josh had had an opportunity to review the book. We do have a, a long line of commissioners waiting.
I do have the book, and I'm, I'm ready to pass that on to whomever needs to...
Okay. I think Marie was the next one to ask.
I will bring it in or drop it by the office.
Or at the next meeting would be sufficient, too.
Okay. Reports and comments? I think you mentioned vacancies.
I do, yes. So the planning commission currently has two vacancies. We've had an advertisement in the local newspapers for the last few weeks. It is my understanding, and I believe Mr. Appicello can confirm this, that we will be having interviews on the next city council meeting of the 26th of August for both vacancies. And so I wanted to let you know that we may have two new members beginning our September 3rd meeting to, to work with. So I'm excited to have a full dius back.
So will we.
And one other item, I just would like to thank Miles for his time on this special day today. I understand it is your birthday, so thank you for coming and spending it with us. Final report I want to do is that we did our sign workshop at Olympic Coast, or Oregon, sorry.
Different state.
It's a different state. It's a different college. The Oregon Coast Community College on Thursday of last week, and we had a great turnout. I really want to thank the members of the planning commission that were able to make that and listen to the comments and suggestions and, and brainstorming ideas that we had for that. We will be preparing a summary of that meeting to bring to the September 3rd as well for your materials to have in the background as we continue forward with looking at drafting edits for final sign ordinance. I would like to consider doing, once the planning commission is done with some work studies, on the, your preferred draft, holding an open house before we go for public hearing.
Do you have a schedule in your mind for that, Rob?
Yeah. So I would like to be able to get through the two meetings in September and potentially the first meeting in October with a, and close up with a draft or a motion for a draft ordinance to send to DLCD and, based upon your recommendations, and then schedule an open house probably mid-October-ish. I don't want to tie us down too much, depending on schedules and timelines, but I do think that avoids the chaos of families returning back to school. It avoids the chaos of, of the tourists and, and our own vacations and, and schedules. So I'm hoping open house in October, public hearing in early November, depending on timeline allowance.
Okay. Good. And future agenda items? It looks like we have two things continued, two public hearings.
Correct. We will have two, two public hearings on September 3rd. One, the land use designations, designations, last ins for the North Lincoln City area. The second being the design standards. We are trying to get the draft ordinance of the design standards out early so that we can provide additional time for review due to the meeting occurring immediately after the holiday weekend. And then we also have a work study that we'll be scheduling for the sign code. And I'm trying to think. I do not believe that we have any other items. I do know that I, early this summer, thought we may be able to cancel that September 3rd meeting. I know that there are a few of you that may have plans or schedules, so I would like to ask for just a general show of hands. I'm not sure yet. General show of hands on those of you that do know that you would be able to attend the September 3rd meeting. the September third meeting. Okay, that provides a quorum, and hopefully we'll have two new members, so we, we should be okay. So, thank you for, for working and being flexible with that.
Sure.
And I would like to point out, because I think you guys will all enjoy this, a learning curve. After our sign workshop on Thursday, the fifteenth, Anne Marie and I came into the office and got ourselves locked in the hallway for ten minutes, and had to get saved by the city manager.
You couldn't find the exit sign?
No, neither of us had our keys, and we would've been walking home.
Well, okay, thanks for being so out there with that.
Learn, learn, learn from others' mistakes, if you ever need.
Any, anything else? Any other comments, commissioners? All right, this meeting's adjourned. Thank you.